We are now live in the public meeting. Members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Audit, please respond present when you hear your name. Trustee Kevin Kim, Chair.
Present.
Trustee Robert Mojica, Vice Chair.
Present.
Trustee Jill O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Trustee Angelo Viva.
Present.
Professor Ned Benton. I saw you, Ned.
Present.
Great. And the Faculty Alternate Professor John Verzani.
Present.
Terrific. Sarah Ortiz, the Student Rep. She joined us yet? Don't see her. Or Alfonso De Roca, who's the Student Alternate. Okay, so we have a quorum. I will now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery, members of the Chancellery and other invited guests. Respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
Great. General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis. Didn't see Derek yet, but I know he'll be joining us. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Centi.
Excellent. Senior Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza.
Present.
Great. Vice Chancellor Richard White.
Present.
President Michelle Anderson, the COPS Liaison.
Present.
Christina Chiappa, Deputy Chief Financial Officer.
Present.
Sarah Montero, the University Executive Controller.
Present.
Shani Matthew, University Director of Internal Audit. Welcome, Shani. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Present.
Claire Esten, Partner at Grant Thornton.
Present.
Terrific. Dennis Marone, Partner at Grant Thornton.
Present.
Steve Dioguardi, Senior Manager, Grant Thornton.
Present.
David Brofman, Manager at Grant Thornton.
Present.
And Matt Thompson, a Principal in the IT Audit Practice at Grant Thornton.
Present.
Terrific. Okay, Kevin, it's all you.
Thanks, Jill. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that the board members are participating remotely and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, I will read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote accordingly. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try not to speak over one another. Item number 1A is approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 7, 2021. May I have a second?
Jill O'Donnell Torme, second.
Thank you, Jill. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, we will now vote. Please, again, only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. All right. The vote has passed unanimously. And the minutes are approved. Item number 1B is approval of the university's fiscal year 2021 audited financial statements. May I have a second?
Jill O'Donnell Torme, second.
Thanks, Jill. Is there any discussion on this item before I turn this over to Senior Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza and Claire Esten, the Partner at Grant Thornton, to run us through the audited financial statements? All right, I will turn it over then to Senior Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza. Matt?
Thank you, Chair Kim. And hello, everyone. Good to see everyone. We're very pleased this afternoon to be presenting our audited financial statements for fiscal '21. These are our consolidated financial statements, and we use that word because it is not just the university's spending. It includes all of the component units from the CUNY Research Foundation, the CUCF, the City University Construction Fund, and all of the discrete units within the campuses. There's 85 discrete units that are all incorporated into this comprehensive financial statements. It's a process that takes many, many months of hard work and long hours. And so I want to recognize Christina Chiappa, Deputy CFO, our University Controller, Sarah Montero, and their team for all of the incredible work they've done over the last several months preparing it. And of course, in conjunction with our external audit firm, Grant Thornton, who also has been putting in many, many long hours in being able to present the financial statements to all of you this afternoon. A couple of complicating factors, as there is every year, but this year especially, again, it was the second year that we were conducting the audit and doing the financial statements in a virtual mode. And so that always created a challenge the second year ago. We had to do that. And then also, the addition of all the federal stimulus funds and reporting that as part of the financial statements as well. That, again, you know, just an additional amount of work to put on the normal process of putting together the statements. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Claire Esten, a Partner at Grant Thornton, who's been our main liaison throughout this process and is going to take us through their findings. So with that, Claire, thank you.
Thank you very much. And it's great to see everybody here today. Appreciate the time that you're taking to review the audit results with us. I have several of my colleagues will go through the results of the audit. But I'll say, at a high level, and we do have some slides that we'll present as well. But before we go to the slides, at a high level, we do expect to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. So a clean opinion on both the university-wide and the senior colleges' financial statements, which is great news and what you want to hear. We do, as Matt indicated, we've been collectively, both on the Grant Thornton side and on the management side, we've been working hard over the last couple of months and particularly the last couple of weeks and days leading up to the meeting today to try to finish the audit process. We are not totally done yet. We have a couple of things left to wrap up, but we do expect to wrap those up in the next, I'll say, couple of days, maybe a week or so. So this is our required communications today. What you'll see talks about the findings that we've noted to date. If something does arise, highly unlikely, but it could happen. If something does arise with the final items that we're going through over the next couple of days before we issue our report, we will work through management to inform Chair Kim. And then we can decide what communication, if any, needs to be provided to the Audit Committee as a whole. But again, that's a very unlikely scenario. So with that said, maybe Steve, if you could put the slides up on the screen. And we will go through these at a fairly high level. What I will say is, if you want to advance, Steve, to the next slide, I'll say that we presented our plan to the Audit Committee in June. As you recall, that's where we kind of talked about what our areas of focus were and the significant items that we would be spending time on this year. And we essentially completed our audit in accordance with that plan without any major deviations. So the areas that we focused on included what you would expect around the main sources of revenue, the material expenses. We did, as you'll see on this slide, at the bottom, grant revenue. We spent quite a bit of time on, Matt mentioned, the HERF revenue. That was a pretty significant source of revenue this year. So we did a lot of testing around that to make sure that it's properly recognized and you're complying with the requirements associated with that money. And so far, we've got no exceptions on that. If you want to turn to the next page, investments and fixed assets. Again, no exceptions noted to date. Next slide. A few other areas that you would expect. Again, expenditures, I mentioned before, appropriations, net pension liability and the OPEB liability and the other accounts that go along with it. No exceptions noted, no audit adjustments noted on any of these areas. We do test for management override of controls. That's a required test on every audit. And making sure that there's no essentially kind of above the structure of internal controls around financial reporting, management going above or sort of circumventing those controls to fraudulently report something in the financial statements. And one thing that I wanted to point out, a piece of that test, is journal entry testing, which we've done every year. But this year, we kind of had a bit of a, because of some innovative tools that Grant Thornton has developed, we had a bit of a different process around it that I just wanted to walk through with the committee very quickly. So this picture, and I know it's a little bit hard to read on the screen. Hopefully, we'll be able to provide the slides afterwards. But just if you took it at the 50,000-foot level, what we do is we take every single journal entry that's recorded by the university for the entire fiscal year, which is millions of journal entries, to be honest. And we put them through a series of sort of filters. And those filters are focused on attributes that would be considered indicators of errors or fraud. And so what this scatter plot shows is it represents, each dot represents an individual journal entry that was booked by management. And the dots in the upper right quadrant represent what we would refer to as notable journal entries, meaning they scored high on the 38 filters that we applied to all the journal entries. For whatever reasons, they scored high. And they're also, so that's sort of on the right-hand side. And as you get higher up on the Y-axis, those are the more material dollar amounts. So you see at the sort of bottom, right, there's a bunch of dots, but those are all immaterial journal entries. So we look at the ones in the top right quadrant to see if there's any either errors associated with those journal entries or fraud. And what's unique about this is we used to kind of take an approach that was a lot more manual around selecting journal entries. And this is a very heavily influenced by artificial intelligence, which is a great tool that not only focuses our sample, but also improves our quality by being able to analyze the entire population of journal entries. So I'm going to pause because I think I saw a hand up somewhere. I don't know if I misunderstood that or not. Sarah Ortiz?
Yes. I think she was just joining the meeting, so.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry.
No problem.
I just wanted to make, I guess I will ask if there are any other questions while I'm taking a pause on what I've said so far. Hearing none. So this represents our journal entry testing. Again, just wanted to kind of share something that's a little bit different with the Audit Committee so you have an appreciation of how we're using data analytics and artificial intelligence in our audit process. I will, with that, I will transition it to Matt Thompson, who, as you heard, is a Principal in our IT Audit Assurance Practice. And he'll talk a little bit about the areas of focus around specifically information technology focused on your key financial reporting system. CUNY first.
Perfect. Thanks, Claire. Good afternoon, everybody. There were six areas of focus for our Information Technology Journal Controls Review, and I want to briefly just walk you through what that scope was. The first area of focus was security administration. And for security administration, we looked at the controls related to user administration for that N-Scope application. The second area of focus was cybersecurity. And in this area, we looked at the controls related to cybersecurity from a financial reporting perspective. One of the areas that we did note is the university does not currently have cyber insurance, but it is something that management is currently looking into, the different options for the university. The third area that we looked at was program maintenance. And in this area, we looked at the controls related to making changes for the N-Scope application. The fourth area that we looked at was program execution. And for that, we looked at the controls related to batch processing. The fifth area was related to application controls. There were two application controls that we looked at related to the PO approval process. And then the sixth focus area was looking for best practices that we could provide back to the university. Claire, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. So the final item that I wanted to communicate with regard to the results of the audit of the financial statements is that we do focus on estimates. Obviously, whenever there's any sort of judgment involved or subjectivity to something that's being reported on the financial statements, we want to make sure that there's no inappropriate bias, either conservative or aggressive bias on management's judgments. So that comes into play in the allowance for doubtful accounts receivable, valuation of certain investments, your pension and OPEB liabilities, those among others that are listed here. Those all require, in some part, some significant estimation on management's part. And we just want to make sure that there's no bias. So we didn't have any adjustments related to any of those significant estimates. So we ultimately felt comfortable with management's judgments related to those accounts. I believe that is, so the next couple of slides show some other sort of standard required communications. If we had any audit adjustments or any internal control deficiencies of the level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness, we would report that to the committee. We, good news is, we have none to report. So again, nothing really to say other than that on those couple of slides. Steve, if you want to move forward. Okay, so with, that concludes the remarks on the financial statement audit. We did want to just take a quick opportunity, because we're with you today, to update you on the federal audit, the Uniform Guidance Audit. So Steve, if you could just very briefly update the committee on our status there, please.
Sure. Great. Thank you, Claire. So just want to, looking at this slide, I want to point out that, you know, as part of our audit, we're required to audit the institution's federal grant awards under Uniform Guidance. And what this table is showing here is we can see in past years, we've, 2019, we've audited the student financial aid cluster. Last year, 2020, we looked at both student financial aid cluster and the HERF funding. And then in current year, we audited just the higher education emergency relief funding, the HERF funding. And during our initial risk assessment procedures, we made that determination that we would be looking at HERF funding only this year. And it worked out to our advantage in that the Department of Education, subsequent to making that decision on our part, made a determination that the HERF program would be high-risk and would be required to be audited anyway. So it worked out into our advantage. And with that, we focused the majority of our testing as related to single auditing compliance of federal award programs on higher education emergency relief funding. Also do want to point out, though, that we did perform certain limited scope testing on the student financial aid cluster at the request of the Audit Committee. So even though it was not required to be audited under single auditing and uniform guidance, we did continue to perform procedures that addressed some of the significant compliance factors around the student financial aid program. As it relates to Uniform Guidance and audit status, we are significantly through the majority of our testing. We anticipate that we will be wrapping that up within the coming weeks. And a couple of areas that I wanted just to point out where our focus was around the testing was around three areas, including student disbursements, the institutional qualifying expenses, and then recovery of lost revenues. And within each of those three focus areas, we gained understanding of management's control environment and the operating effectiveness of the controls around compliance with these various transactions, as well as performing testing of a sample of transactions and analysis within each of these focus areas. Are there any questions as it relates to Uniform Guidance?
Yes, one quick one?
Sure.
How do you go about analyzing the transactions related to recovery of lost revenue? Since it would seem like by definition, there wouldn't be a transaction. That's what's being documented.
So I chose my words carefully. I said analyses and transactions to cover that specifically. So lost revenue is addressed with management's analysis of a comparison of the revenues in the current period as compared to prior periods to determine the lost revenues that ultimately falls within the guidance that has come out from the Department of Education.
Yeah, I'll say there are very prescribed formulas that the Department of Ed provided to universities that they're allowed to use essentially for calculating lost revenue. So for example, CUNY would take the revenue from tuition and fee revenue from spring of 2020, which, because the revenue was essentially locked in before the pandemic happened, that was a quote-unquote "normal" semester, spring of 2020. And then they compared it to spring of 2021. And the delta between those two is considered lost revenue. There's a little bit of nuances, but that's at a high level, how it's done. It's a very prescribed calculation from the Department of Ed. Thank you for the question.
Thank you for the answer.
Happy to do it. So that concludes our required communications. Again, we covered the financial statement audit. We gave you an update on the Uniform Guidance Audit. If anybody has any questions on the results of the audit, we're happy to take questions. If not, I have Dennis Marone here with me. He's our National Industry Managing Partner for our Higher Education and Not-for-Profit Practices. And he was just going to spend a few minutes briefly on some industry updates that we're seeing across the higher education industry. We do have some slides that speak to it, but I think Dennis was just going to prepare or provide a few remarks at a high level, and we'll share the slides after the meeting.
Sure. So if that's okay with everyone, thank you, Claire. Again, this is Dennis Marone. I'm our National Management Partner of our not-for-profit industry practice. I know I've presented to this group in the past and talked a little bit about what we're seeing in terms of trends across the higher education landscape. So I just wanted to apprise the group today on some of the more significant themes that we're seeing here. So, you know, I think first, it's fair to say that the recovery has started and hopefully it will continue, but it has been uneven. And many institutions, you know, continue to struggle as we make our way through this pandemic here. Overall, I think it's important to note that Standard and Poor's, one of the rating agencies for the higher education sector, really views the sector in terms of the outlook as negative. And so they're recognizing that there are some headwinds that we all have to contend with as leaders and fiduciaries of academic institutions. And part of those headwinds have to do a little bit about enrollments. And COVID-19 in general led to unprecedented declines in college and university enrollment numbers overall. For, to be specific, in fiscal '20, the college freshman student, all enrollments declined by 16% over the prior year. So that was approximately 560,000 students that either paused or stopped their education as a result of COVID. So obviously, it's a very significant number. That said, the impact varied widely. And public universities in general fared better than their private institution counterparts. So that's of significance to note. I think it's fair to say also that, you know, COVID certainly exacerbated the declines in enrollments, but we know that that's going to continue. The enrollment cliff is coming. It's projected to be in 2027. And again, it's not that the rate of high school graduates is declining. That still seems to hover around 88%, depending on which dashboard you're looking at. It's just that the pool is shrinking. But there is some good news here. I have spoken to my counterparts in other parts of the world, and particularly in England, where they said they're actually experiencing a bumper crop of high school graduates. And so there is the prospect and potential that institutions US-based may receive more international students in the coming years ahead. And that could help defray the enrollment cliff that we know is coming. In terms of federal relief programs, we know CUNY has certainly received its share of federal relief programs. It's been about $69 billion in total of total federal relief that was given to all higher education institutions across the nation. Only about $11 billion of that amount went to private institutions. So the preponderance went to public institutions. And of course, that's in proportion to the number of enrollments overall that they have. In terms of tuition revenue, overall, it decreased by about 2.6%. And that's a confluence really of two factors. One, the declines in the enrollments that I mentioned a moment ago, but also an increase in discounting. And just to give you some perspective, overall, discount rates amongst first-time borrowers, again, the entire higher education landscape, was about 53.9%. So very, very significant. When we look at all undergraduates, it was holding at about 48.1%. That's why I think most institutions are certainly focused on the importance of student retention. The more we can retain those students, certainly that yields a higher overall contribution to the performance of the institution. You know, for those institutions that had investments, obviously, this was a huge year for investments. For, again, some institutions had 50% returns on some of their portfolios, not a significant factor for today's discussion. In terms of debt, overall, institutions levered up across the higher education landscape. The total portfolio increased by about 15%. Most of that was to focus on priority capital projects at a time when campuses were slower than they had ever been. So it allowed institutions to be a little bit more effective and efficient in terms of addressing those projects and doing some new building. Also, the cost of capital obviously has been down. With interest rates down at historic lows, people use that as an opportunity to optimize the cost of borrowing. A few other comments here of note. Overall, donor philanthropy during the period of the pandemic has persisted. And that's been good news for most institutions. It's helped buoy their balance sheets. It's helped them with campaigns. It's helped them in other ways make up for the eclipse between revenues and expenses. We think largely it's because household balance sheets have increased, in part buoyed by retirement programs, excuse me, funds that were perhaps equity-based, and also increases in property values. And so those two factors gave individuals, perhaps those that had a property, a sense that they can contribute more as they had more financial wherewithal to perhaps give and meet the causes, but also the demands that have been punctuated by the pandemic. And individuals certainly have responded to those. In terms of institutional closures, we still see about one per month. So for the four-year period ended 2021, there was about 48 institutions closed. Now, for context, there's about 5,300 institutions in the country, so it's almost less than 1%. But Moody's and others and Standard and Poor's do expect that the rate of closures will continue as those institutions that struggled in a pre-COVID world will continue to have those challenges as we come out of this. The last item is strategy. And I think most institutions are being introspective right now to really consider their strategic plans, their priorities, their imperatives. And they're taking a shorter view. Where in the past, they may have taken a 10- or 15-year approach to strategic alignment and focus. It's now much shorter, perhaps only three or five. And any goals, strategic gates that are included within those plans are carefully aligned with actual resource planning. So we're not going to plan something unless we know exactly where we're going to get the resources from today to accomplish those objectives. And so with that, I know that was the abbreviated version. We've included a number of slides as part of the presentation that Claire will share post-meeting. Happy to take any questions, and I appreciate the committee's time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Claire, is that all for your team?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you again to our CUNY staff, Christina, Matt, and also to the Grant Thornton team. Does anyone have any questions? Any topics you want to discuss further? Seeing none, hearing none, we will now take a vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. This is for the approval of item number 1B, approval of the university's fiscal year 2021 audited financial statements. Anybody opposed or abstaining? Seeing, hearing none, this item has been approved. With no more items on the calendar, we'll now move to information items. Information item 2A is a discussion of the Internal Audit Charter. And for that discussion, I'll turn it over to Vice Chancellor Richard White. He will provide an overview of the charter.
Thank you, Chairman Kim, and good afternoon, everyone on the committee. It's good to see you all. Before I started here, I thought I'd take the opportunity, and I apologize, we hadn't had the opportunity to introduce the new Shani Matthew, our new University Executive Director of Internal Audit. She started really over the summer, at the end, so we didn't have an opportunity to bring her to the committee until now. So I first wanted to take that opportunity to introduce her and tell you a little bit about her experience that she brings to the table. Ms. Matthew has over two decades of experience as a seasoned professional covering internal audits, SOX compliance, forensic investigations, governance, risks, and controls. Additionally, her experience includes performing operational audits to determine internal controls, risk mitigation, operational efficacy, compliance audits to ensure adherence to regulatory bodies, and financial audits to verify. and financial audits to verify the accuracy of records to help identify misuse misuse of funds and to ensure controls in place. Prior to us getting here at CUNY, she was the director of internal audit at Mercy College in Dobbs Ferry, where she was responsible for conducting financial compliance and internal audits there. She helped advance the department in conformity and conforming with IIA standards, which are, as many of you know, the international standards that we're going to talk a little bit more later on. She established there for Mercy College, the Internal Audit Charter, which we'll be talking about again in a few minutes, and policies and procedures to ensure the professional practice of internal audit uh was uh correct and uh due and consistent with national standards. Um, she also, her teams performed a variety of audits, and clearly Title IX, purchasing T and E accounts and a variety of other audits consistent with the internal audit function. She previously served as the internal audit manager for the international company of, I think I'm gonna say this right, uh, Pernod Ricard, uh, which is one of the world leaders in wine and spirits. And before that, she was senior associate in the Big Eight accounting firm of PricewaterhouseCoopers. Um, so we are honored to have her here with us. Uh, it was a a really a big coup to get her to come on board here to CUNY. She replaced Gordon Taylor, those you know, who was promoted uh um uh into the position as a university deputy uh uh a general counsel for Derek Davis and also replaced uh, we had an interim director who retired in March. So I just wanted on behalf of us here at CUNY to take the opportunity to introduce her to the committee as you'll be hearing from her uh at not only at this meeting, but going forward. So thank you for giving me that opportunity. Any questions or anything you want to say, Shani?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chancellor White, for the introduction. And I'd just like to take a moment to just say how excited I am for the opportunity to work at CUNY alongside Vice Chancellor White, the RAC unit, and especially in the Office of Internal Audit and Management Services. Thank you.
Um, if I can, one of the things that uh we had here and and for the informational purposes uh was to talk about presenting to you all um the Office of Internal Audit and Management Services Internal Audit Charter. As you all know, um, I'll just call it audit. I don't want to keep saying owns or or audit. Uh, is here to assist uh for CUNY's internal audit purposes. They're responsible for auditing CUNY Central or Office and and all twenty five colleges, their financial, operational, internal uh controls and activities, as you're all aware of, to prevent fraud, waste and abuse and misuse and loss. Um, our audits that we do are designed, obviously, to be highlight potential areas of concern and to prove operations. In twenty seventeen, the university uh uh and the Board of Trustees amended Article Three of the bylaws to create the Audit Committee, which we appeared before. And part of those uh rules and amendments uh pertain to Section Four, Article four oh two of the charter, which required the Audit Committee to in fact review an audit charter. Um, for those of you just for the broader perspective, the Internal Audit Charters are required for all internal audit departments that follow the Institute of Internal uh of internal auditors or IAA, which I indicated before. The Institute of Internal Auditors is an international organization that develops and provides guidance on internal audit standards and practices, as well as a source of certifications and qualifications for internal auditors. And I know my colleagues at Grant Thornton is more are more than familiar with with that organization. Uh, now, to date, uh, the Audit Committee had not been uh presented an internal audit charter, but this is a great opportunity for us to look at it. Fortunately, in reviewing the standards of the Internal Audit Charter and the the standards of IAA, uh, the Audit Unit had been following those standards by ensuring the independence and objectivity of the audit function. The proposed Internal Audit Charter would merely formalize the work that the Audit Unit is doing and its continued adherence to the mandatory requirements of the IAA professional practices and framework, including its standards, its core principles for professional practices of internal auditing, the definition of internal auditing codes and ethics, as well as requirements set forth in CUNY's Board of Trustees Audit Committee Charter. Now I have uh I uh an actual the copy of the audit and will obviously share it with you all. But if we can, I can pull it up quickly on the screen. It'll give you a sense of the the breadth of what the charter is. And then uh I'll stop and answer any questions that anybody has. So uh, Shani, do you have access to to the screen? Or I don't know if to wonder if you can pull up the charter.
I gave you access, Richard. You you have access.
Oh, I gotta talk and work at the same time. That's I'm scared.
That's who I was told. So and everyone received a copy of this. You should have it on the portal, so.
Okay. Can everyone see this? I'm seeing nodding in the affirmative. Okay. So this is our document. It's approximately ten pages long. It's consistent with the national standards for an internal audit charter. Table of contents clearly refers to the Board of Trustees resolutions, the definitions of what internal audits are, the purpose and mission statement, the objective, the internal control, the authority of the internal chief internal auditor, which is obviously Ms. Matthew, our organizational structure, independence, objectivity, confidentiality, code of ethics, the standard, standard of conduct, the scope of an internal order function, the responsibilities for detection of errors or irregularity, and the services provided and professional proficiency. And I'll scroll down and please stop me at any time if anyone has any questions. I'm not going to read all the pages because we got about three minutes over. Um, but as it it's here, it references the items I indicated before, CUNY's Audit Committee Resolutions. It indicates the actions that the chancellor led by the chancellor and the creation of RAC and then uh creating the the actual authority of RAC and then building on the on the work of the Board of Trustees from the Audit Committee and the requirements. It gives a variety of definitions and the mission statement, which we're required to in fact memorialize our objectives, our internal controls, uh and the and the definitions thereof and the responsibilities. As I indicated, our general structure. It indicates clearly and openly to everyone our independence and our objectivity, our confidentiality, which again, thank you, members of the board, which was affirmed in your December resolution uh for all of RAC mandating that the work we do remain confidential. Audit already had an element of confidentiality, but uh you double that with the work of this committee and the whole of Board of Trustees, and this again codifies all of our responsibilities. Our code of ethics, again, indicates the standards of IIA and the conduct. Again, the sections on detection of errors and irregularity, various services that we do and professional proficiency. So again, what this is specifically is while audit had been informally doing all of these things, um, this is an opportunity for us to in fact codify uh um what we should be doing uh so that it becomes a public document. It's open and it's clear to everyone, providing the level of confidence in our internal audits. Let me stop now and ask the members of the committee if there are any questions for anything that I presented and that either I or Ms. Matthew can answer. All right, then that concludes our presentation for the Internal Order Charter. The one thing I would point out is that this charter, uh, if it if adopted and when adopted uh by the board, uh, certainly puts us on par with our colleagues at SUNY, at Fordham, and other major institutions uh as really a forward-facing document. And I know our colleagues, you can't speak at Grant Thornton, but you can not in affirmative or recognize the significance of of CUNY uh coming out in front and taking the lead on providing this document here. So I'll I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor White, and Shani, welcome again. Uh, there being no further business, I asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, thank you. Uh, anyone opposed? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. And anyone who's going to be in the executive session?